I'm going to go ahead and call this evening's meeting to order. This is the City Council meeting for September 18th. Please show that all members of the City Council are here present. And the audience, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by two people.
With a chorus.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, no one opposed, all right. Next item is one of our favorite things since we get to recognize some service here in Clayton. And we do have our awardee here in the audience, Russ Eddy. I'd like you to come forward.
Come up here, Russ. He's going to come around to you.
Yes, I'm going to come around. I have a nice, long proclamation to recognize Russ for his long years of service here in Clayton.
We add a sentence for every year.
No, not quite that long.
Might be more than that.
Yes, this is a proclamation, and it'll end up with Russ Eddy Day. Whereas the California Commission of Peace Officer Standards and Training Post sets the selection and training standards for all California law enforcement officers. And as a Level One Reserve, Officer Russ Eddy endured the same rigorous training and hiring process, carried the same weapon, and wore the same bulletproof vest, and completed the same ongoing perishable skills training that full-time police officers fulfill to maintain active law enforcement status. And whereas Officer Eddy was authorized to operate alone, responded to calls for service, patrolled neighborhoods, conducted traffic stops, performed investigations, and protected precious life and property in the city of Clayton. And whereas every time Officer Eddy put on his uniform, he selflessly puts his life in the line for what he believes was right without hesitation, and did this without compensation for 18 years with the city of Clayton, California. And whereas after seven years with the Walnut Creek Police Department, Officer Eddy finally saw the light and elected to protect his life and liberty here in Clayton, starting in June of 2000. And whereas Officer Eddy served two shifts per week thereafter, worked special events, attended mandatory training, and countless other tasks, Officer Eddy easily donated well over 14,000 hours to the community and city of Clayton. And whereas upon reaching 25 years of noble service, Officer Eddy made the very difficult decision, yet priority decision, to hang up his badge for more family time with his wife, kids, and grandchildren, effective September 25th, 2018. And whereas Officer Eddy is considered family to us and has a positive influence on his coworkers over his 18 years of service with the Clayton Police Department, I now therefore, Keith Hayden, Mayor of the City of Clayton, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council, do hereby commend Officer Russ Eddy for his many years of honorable service to the community of Clayton, and here in extend our best wishes for a joyful and happy future, and do proudly proclaim Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, as Russ Eddy Day in the city of Clayton, California. Want you to get the honor that you deserve here. We have a proclamation for you and a very nice plaque that reads "With sincere appreciation to Russ Eddy, Clayton Reserve Service Police Officer for valued community leadership and protection, October 2000 to September 2018." And has a nice symbol of both the Police Department and the city of Clayton. So you want to hold that?
Okay.
Let some people get some pictures here. All right, Officer Eddy, would you like to say anything to the crowd?
I would.
I'll hold that for you.
Like Keith was saying, coming from Walnut Creek, I was down there for a little over seven years, and I was actually going to get out of Reserve Police Officer, and there were some officers here that talked me into applying here in Clayton. I said, "Well, whatever happens in Clayton, can't be that much." But anyway, I came, and Chief Peterson was the one at the time, and he was the one that hired me into Clayton. But that's been for a little over 18 years now, and it was probably the best decision I ever made, other than marrying my wife and having a son and grandkids now. But it's been quite an experience for me, all the things that I got to do here, all the officers that have come and gone, the number of police chiefs that have come and gone, interim police chiefs and all that kind of stuff. It's really been a pleasure working with everybody. And I look at the police force now, and it was a hard decision to make to retire. I thought, "I can go for a few more years or whatever, but what am I going to accomplish?" We have a lot of new officers coming in, so we have a wide variety of officers right now with a lot of different experiences, but it's a pleasure working with all of them. So I thank Clayton for the opportunity to do this, and now I can... There is actually one last thing that I wanted to accomplish, and next... I work tonight, I work next Sunday, and I work next Tuesday. And one of my goals in the police work here was to catch one of the City Council members speeding. And so I am going to definitely try that and just see what kind of whining and all this stuff that goes on when I'm giving them the ticket, because I'm going to give them a ticket. I have nothing to lose.
If you want to know what we whine at, just ask our spouses.
But I do want to thank everybody, and I do want to thank Gary too, because over the years, I mean, this is a volunteer position. And obviously, I didn't make a lot of money doing it. But Gary, over the years, has really treated me like an employee here. You know, and service years and all that kind of stuff. I thought, the first time he gave me one or whatever, I was impressed with, what does he give me a service award for? Because I'm not an employee here. But he did, and he followed up every time, and I mean, it was fantastic. So, I mean, the way Clayton accepted me and what I was able to do here, I really appreciate it. And thank you all for coming, especially all the officers that have come tonight and everything, and getting a job with the city. Who knows? Okay, thank you.
And you put us on notice, so you'll understand then why you don't see any of the City Council on the streets for the next week here. All right, next item is actually going to be a presentation by the Contra Costa County Animal Control Services Department regarding their scope of contract services that they provide for the city of Clayton. We have their Community and Media Relations Manager, Steve Bernal, here tonight to give that presentation. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor Hayden, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here. I love getting the opportunities to come and visit with our city councils and our city managers and police chiefs, because it gives me the opportunity to learn about the great things that are going on in each of our cities and the great people like Officer Eddy. Much like my preference, our department, we love keeping in touch and being engaged with our communities. And so here I am tonight. My name is Steve Burdo. I'm the Community and Media Relations Manager for Contra Costa Animal Services, that is your animal services provider. And I just wanted to go through a brief presentation describing the services that we're providing, not only to the county, but specifically the city of Clayton. So as I begin, walk you through our department real quick. Our department consists of six primary areas. Our field services officers, those are officers in the field. What makes us different than a lot of other animal control agencies in California is that we are a law enforcement agency. A lot of other counties will outsource certain portions to humane societies or SPCA's. We are a county-run standalone agency that is responsible not only for the sheltering of animals, but also for the enforcement of animal-related laws. Animal cruelty, animal neglect, you name it, we... Our guys are equipped to enforce it. Our shelter operations team, those are the people who take care of the daily care of the animals, the watering, the feeding, the maintenance of the kennels. Our medical services staff, they go above and beyond all day, every day, to provide an amazing level of care and treatment for the animals. We are not an acute care facility. We're not the place where if your cat or dog is sick, that you're going to bring them to us. You go to your regular vet for that. But each and every day, our medical staff goes above and beyond performing lifesaving measures medically to save the lives of animals that were abandoned or neglected otherwise. Our clerical division, that's the first line you're going to touch if you come into our shelters or if you call us on the phone, you're going to talk to one of our clerks. Our volunteers, no animal shelter in the country could operate without a strong contingent of volunteers. We have over 250 who give their time and talent every single week. And then our administration, our director, deputy director, captain, myself, our administrative services officer. So I wanted to talk specifically about some of the services we've provided to Clayton over the last year. In the last... This is calendar year, not fiscal year, so this is all of 2017. A lot of times, it tends to be a warrant if your officers are going to serve a warrant at an area, and they know that there's an aggressive animal or an animal that may be aggressive, they're going to call us up, we're going to participate in your briefing, we'll go and subdue the animal, and then your officers could get in and do what they need to do. And then we did two animal rescues down here. I'd be remiss not to mention that every year, the way the city of Clayton pays the county is by per capita rate. That per capita rate increases every year at the turn of the fiscal year, and it increases per the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. So the prior year, the CPI was about 2.9%, which sees Clayton seeing a 17 cents per capita rate increase, going from $5.94 to $6.11, which is what you're paying now since we're in the new fiscal year. And I feel strong that I have to mention that most Bay Area municipalities are paying, on average, $11.80 for their animal services. Where I live in Marin County, we play about $11.90 per capita. I believe Santa Cruz County is right around that, $11.80. Antioch, which is the only city in Contra Costa County that we don't provide animal services for, they're right up around $10 per capita right now. So we provide a high level of service, but at a much lower premium. Our director, Beth Ward, has been on, this November, it'll be three years, and the same with me. And one of the things we wanted to do when we came in was work with our city managers and police chiefs to figure out how we could improve our services, how we're reporting our services, is there a better way to report the services we're provided? And so over the past couple of years, we've been having annual and periodic meetings with the city managers and police chiefs for all of the cities that we contract with, and we developed a new reporting structure. This is... You don't need to really focus on it, I bring it up just for discussion, but this is one of the things that we've added, is a lot of city managers want to know, what are the animals that are coming from our community? So this is a new report that'll be reported on a quarterly basis. As you can see, there's a lot of deer, cats, dogs, obviously, raccoons. We have some livestock here, we have coyotes, rabbits, snakes, squirrels, everything. But this will give you a sense of what we're impounding from your community, whether they're alive or deceased, and that just gives a good year-over-year perspective with that. One of the big improvements that we're very, very proud of is, you know, one of the metrics that most public safety and law enforcement agencies are gauged by is your response time. And for years, that is a metric that our agency did not have. Part of it is because of the difficulties. We don't have outposts around the county, like, say, the Sheriff's Department. All of our officers are being dispatched from the same location of Martinez, so if you're in Far East or Far West County, or even down south as San Ramon, it may take us a little while to get there, because we can't go Code Three and turn on the lights like a police car can. We have to obey traffic rules while we're en route to an emergency. However, we did, with that, develop five levels of priority and develop response times for them. And as you can see, the real focus was getting to the priority ones, which are the emergency calls. Somebody being attacked by an animal, somebody witnessing somebody causing animal abuse, or an animal in a very dangerous situation. Particularly, we've had horses on the highway on the 680 last year, we had bulls on the highway, those are our priority ones, and we want to get to those. Our response time, our target response time is two hours. And again, that's solely due to the fact that all of our officers are dispatching out of the same centralized location in the county. But as you can see, we're doing a pretty good job of hitting the mark there. The average response time for the priority ones is about one hour, and our target is two hours. So the priorities two, three, and four, and just to give an explanation of some of those, the priority twos are those activities that require exigency in a response but are not immediate, nobody is in, there is no threat to public health or safety. And priority threes, those tend to be bite investigations. A lot of those are follow-up investigations, following up with somebody who was bit by a domestic animal or even a wild animal. And priority fours, those tend to be hearings and stuff that we're doing at our facility where we're either holding a PDA, Potentially Dangerous Animal, or Dangerous Animal Hearing, or one of our noise ordinance hearings. And priority fives, those are self-initiated calls. If our officer is in the field and he sees something that needs to be addressed, he or she will self-initiate the call, and that's why there's a five-day priority. Most of those are pretty much taken care of pretty quickly. Another thing that a lot of the city managers in particular asked for was, how is your city using services compared to that of the other cities in the rest of the county? So this is just a stacked graph chart. This will be provided to each city manager and police chief on a quarterly basis. We did a study last year and found that basically everything is fairly imbalanced. Considering the level that you pay on with the per capita payments, the size of your population, the amount you're paying, compared to the level of service you're using, as you can see, Clayton represents about 1% of our total service area and uses about just under 1% of our total services. So everything tends to be imbalanced. There was only about one outlier that was a couple of percentage points off, and that was San Ramon, and we're working with them to figure out, you know, how we could bring that a little more in balance. But you'll be happy to know that in terms of the service levels you're receiving, they're very much imbalanced with how... With the size of your service area and the amount you're paying as a city. Couple of policy updates. I know you're very aware of the noisy animal ordinance, since you just passed it. This is a very big improvement. The way the prior process worked was, we needed two people to call from within... Well, first person would call, and they'd say, "I'm reporting a noisy animal." We would then send a letter to both parties, the party who called and the party with the noisy animal, and it would say to the party who called, "We received your complaint, we notified your neighbor, you have to give them a period of 10 days to fix the problem," and then you could complain again. The neighbor with the noisy animal would get a similar letter, and it would say, "You have 10 days to fix the problem," or you can face a finer citation. However, when you call for the second call to escalate it, what we required at that time was for you to get one of your neighbors within 300 feet of the noise nuisance to call us up as well, and that would trigger us sending an officer out. Now, in terms of the priorities, these are lower priority calls. So the call comes in at nine o'clock at night when the noise is happening, our officer is able to get there at about noon when the noise isn't happening. So a lot of these cases went unverified. Both parties felt unheard, the party that was complaining felt that, you know, the government wasn't responding, the party with the noisy animal felt they were harassed. A lot of times, as a custodian of records, I would get a records request from the neighbor trying to find out which one of their neighbors ratted them out. So what we knew was not happening was that neighbors weren't talking to neighbors at the front end. And so we wanted to... If we were going to move forward with a new process, we needed it to be community-minded and collaborative with all the parties involved. So the way it works now is, it's completely online, which takes all the calls out of our call center. If you've ever called our office, the average wait time's about half an hour, because we have a service area of about 1.2 million people. And so what happens is now, we move that all to the website. You file the first complaint on the website, it's embedded, that gets sent to us, that triggers those notices, the same as if you called the first time. However, once that... In this case, we've increased it to 15 days to account for the mailing of the notices. Now, after 15 days, instead of getting a neighbor, you go back to our website, you download an affidavit, you either fill it out and get it notarized and sent back to us, or you could bring it to our Martinez or Penole locations and have it witnessed by one of our officers or clerical staff, and that will automatically trigger a citation. So the citation gets sent, but with the citation, there is a request for a hearing. That's the person who's being cited's ability to appeal that citation. That triggers the hearing, which brings both parties to the table. We've done a number of these. I'm one of the hearing officers, and I can tell you, we've had a great success in terms of mitigating solutions without having to uphold the fine. So it's doing what we wanted it to do, which is bringing neighbors together and finding meaningful solutions to community problems. The other ordinance that passed, and I'm not sure that there's any parcels in your community that are zoned this way, it's a rooster ordinance. And this has to do with, for years, Contra Costa County was one of the only counties in California that didn't have a rooster ordinance on the books, which meant that those people who engage in the activities of cockfighting knew that this was a safe haven for them. We really had no probable cause to investigate those claims, because we didn't have a rooster ordinance on the books, meaning people could have had as many roosters as they want. The way you're going to get in to investigate that is by seeing somebody reporting rooster noise, or seeing that somebody has more than the allowed roosters on the property. So we passed that ordinance this past May, and the plots are zoned A2. Those are agricultural lots of five acres or larger. We allow no more than two roosters on those lots. So if there are any of those lots in your community, you may want to see about possibly adopting that ordinance. But as we looked with the Department of Conservation Development, there didn't seem to be any in Incorporated Clayton. So just passing that update along. Very quickly, one of the pure metrics on the sheltering end that animal control agencies are gauged by is your live release rate. How many of the animals that you bring in leave the shelter alive? And I'm very proud to report, we have a stellar live release rate for a municipal shelter. We're among the highest live release rates for municipal shelters in the country. Our dog live release rate is 92%. Our overall live release rate is 83%. Our cat live release rate is 82%. But when you really focus on what the people want to focus on, dogs and cats, our combined dog and cat live release rate is 87%. We will never call ourselves a no-kill shelter. That's an advocacy term, and we're not in the business of advocacy. We're in the business of saving lives. So we say, instead of saying no-kill, we say yes to saving lives, and it's reflected in our stats. And if anybody's interested, we put our stats every month on our website. We try to be as transparent as an agency is possible. So giving you just a glimpse about the volume of our agency, our animal intake in 2017 was just under 10,500 animals. We're very proud to reunite just about 20% of those animals with their owners. We did 3,500 public adoptions, another 2,600 adoptions to transfer groups, of which there's hundreds of them in our community in Contra Costa County. We have a community cat program that return 911 cats to the field. Those feral cats and community cats in most other, particularly municipal shelters, they are euthanized on intake, because there's not a lot of solutions for them. We have a full... We have three tracks for them. We have trap neuter release, return to field, and working cat program. And the working cat program's pretty cool, because these aren't the cats that are going to snuggle up to you or be your best friend, but if you have a rodent problem and you need some organic pest eradication, we have a whole team of cats waiting to be adopted to help you out with that. We did over 2,000 low-cost vaccinations for residents of Contra Costa County, over 5,000 spare neuter surgeries, and like I said, a very big point of pride for us are those 571 local law enforcement assists. One of the greatest programs that we've enacted in the last couple of years, and this is something that really has a benefit to our entire community, including the city of Clayton, is our pet retention program. Working with Tony LaRusso's Animal Rescue Foundation, you know, we cannot control... We are mandated to take in all sick, injured, potentially dangerous, dangerous, stray, under 12 weeks of age. The only pipeline we have control over to say, "No, we can't take that animal," is owner-surrendered animals. If you are an owner that has an animal that you say, "I need to surrender this for whatever reason." We wanted to... We knew that most of those people typically want to keep their animals, but they don't have a way to do it. So we partnered with Tony LaRusso's Animal Rescue Foundation to develop a program that we will provide 500, up to $500 in cash assistance to help you keep your pet, or get you training, if they need training, crate training, behavior training, or any type of assistance. If you need a fence built, because your German Shepherd keeps escaping, we have a fund and a program that's dedicated to helping people keep their pets. Over the first two years of enacting this program, it's cut the number of animals coming into our shelter through the owner surrender pipeline in half. That's a significant benefit to our communities, and it's certainly a significant benefit to the people who get to keep their animals. So as I wind up here, I just want to talk about some of our opportunities and challenges. We have a great opportunity to increase low-cost spay and neuter and vaccination programs in Contra Costa County. We're one of the only games in town right now, and we're working with... We're forming community partnerships. We've formed one with Fix Our Ferals in West County. They're doing... They're matching our prices and doing low-cost spay and neuter surgeries for residents of Contra Costa County. And we're working on developing another one in East County, and then we certainly have our clinics at the Martinez Shelter. But really, we need more. We have a pet overpopulation problem in Contra Costa County, and the way we're going to address that is getting animals vaccinated, spayed, and neutered. We have an environment ripe for collaboration with local animal welfare groups in our contract cities and the myriad of civic groups in those communities. We do a lot of partnering with rotaries and lions clubs and koalas clubs to help get the word out, to help adopt animals, and to really help people know who to call for what. We have a hard-working, committed staff and volunteer corps and a supportive and engaged community. Some of our challenges include balancing lifesaving with the length of stay and quality of care. As our live release rate continues to rise, the real issue becomes length of stay and quality of care. That's really where our focus is right now. We need to update our processes and procedures to bring the department into the 21st century. That was part of the noise ordinance. Let's get that out of our call center, let's use our technology and put it online, make it easier for the public to do this. We need to increase staffing, we need to reduce the volume of animals, we need to address our physical facility constraints. Our Martinez facility is an amazing facility, our Penole facility is kind of a closet. So that's one of the things we're looking at, and we need to address the continuous population growth in Contra Costa County, both the two-legged and four-legged variety. So right before I finish, I'd just like to give you five easy steps to support your local shelter. Always consider adoption as the first option. Please ensure that your pets are licensed and microchipped. Licensed and microchipped pets have a much greater percentage of being reunited with their owners if they become lost. Volunteer at the Martinez or Penole shelter, no matter what your time or your talent, we have a role for you. Sign up to take a tour of the Martinez or Penole shelter. Martinez Shelter is right up the road. I would be happy to give anybody a tour whenever they're interested. And for the council members, I'll also add this, and this is something that other council members in other cities have taken us up on. Do a ride-along with one of our officers in your beat area down here. I think you'll come to find, the days of the dog wrangler are over. What our officers are doing in the field is quite cutting-edge, and it's never a dull moment. So I'd certainly invite any and all of you to join our officers for a day in the field and see what they're doing in your community. And certainly like us on Facebook. We have a great reach on social media. We're over 22,000 followers on Facebook, and all of our other platforms continue to grow as well, Instagram, Twitter. Follow us, we're putting a lot of good information out there, not just about the adoptable animals, but about the things you could do to keep you and your animals safe, and what to do if you see an animal or a person in harm. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for Steve from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple related to your page on, let's see, the serving Clayton, just informational, yeah. Does the bird, and you had nine birds, does that include wild turkeys or not?
No, unless they are deceased. And I believe that if it's... I believe we call out turkey, so bird is more pigeon or blackbird or something like that that's in there. We would call out turkey itself. However, wild turkeys, if they're alive, are not our jurisdiction. That's the State Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Really?
Yes.
Even though they're resident in the golf course?
Yeah, oh, they're... You've got to come to our Martinez Shelter in the morning. They're lined up on the banisters welcoming people as you walk in. It's like you're walking into a high-five parade or something.
And then the second question, what about wild boars? Because several of us have been attacked, not the... The property's been attacked by them. Who handles that?
While that is also the State Department of Fish and Game, what we always tell people, and we work with the State Department of Fish and Game, if it's something that is impacting public safety or someone's health and safety, our officers are going to respond.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, Steve. On the page where you're showing the target response times by priority... On the page where you're showing the target response times by priority level?
Yes, sir.
It looked like you met all of those within the time period you had targeted, based on the priority that was set?
Based on the priority that was set, looking here, it looks, in Clayton, it looks like we are, yes. Very proud about that.
Yes.
I mean, again, we only started implementing this in mid-March of this year, so it's very new for us. So what we're seeing in a lot of other communities is that the real important ones, the priority ones and twos, which are the immediate focus, they were on point. The threes, fours, and the fives are a little weird because, again, those are self-initiated. But with the threes and the fours, they were a little out of balance, depending like if you're in Richmond, which is a very high-volume center for us in terms of utilizing our services and the level of activity that we see down there. So, but very proud to see that we're doing pretty well in Clayton.
Well, good, thank you, Steve. I want to reinforce the good working relationship we have with the county animal services and also reinforce that it's helpful to us to be able to rely on experts who are very experienced in dealing with these issues when they do come up. So we really don't have that expertise on our force. We're a smaller city, so it's helpful to be able to take advantage of your larger personnel.
Thank you, Mayor Hayden, and we're always here to help.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up will be reports. Planning Commission did not hold a meeting. Trails and Landscape did not hold a meeting. City staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I first want to recognize the individual sitting next to me. It's not our city attorney, Mala Subramanian. It is Margaret Lee. She is with the law firm of Best, Best &amp; Krieger. And before going to that law firm, she was in the city attorney's office for the city of Oakland. And I believe you were handling planning and land use items over there. So welcome, Margaret. Secondly, we're in the final phase, as many people have realized that they're trying to move about town, of our slurry seal portion of our neighborhood street repaving project. We hope to finalize it tomorrow, and then there'll be a final punch list. We are also very aware, for people who are watching or listening, that there are certain vehicles, for some magical reason, have been able to jump the barricades where it said "road closed." And we realize that there are tracks on some of those recently still uncured asphalt slurry ceiling. We've been working with the contractor. As far as the city is concerned, those streets that have tracks on them, for whatever reason, are unacceptable to us in terms of the project. The contractor has site control of the site, so we will be working with them, our city engineer, to work on ways to smooth that over, to make certain that there's no ruts before we bring the matter to you for completion. In fact, I just saw one area on my street that had been sealed over where someone had gone beyond the barricade somehow and then decided, oops, this doesn't look good, and had done a turnabout and left some tracks in there, and a portion of that was sealed over. So we do acknowledge that. And if your street has those tracks on them, and we haven't been informing them recently, please call City Hall and let us know as well. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Couple maybe for you or the city engineer, striping, when is that, particularly downtown?
Scott, why don't you come on forward and let us know when the, this is our city engineer, Scott Allman.
And specifically, there was a, on Main Street, there were some striping that were completed in the last go-around, and the space did not accommodate a car. It was very narrow.
Is that right?
Right. So hopefully, when they're restriped, they'll be able to be equally distant apart.
Yeah, there was one section that should have had two cars, and they striped it for three, and it didn't fit.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, speaking through the manager. The striping will be within the next two weeks. We don't have a hard schedule yet from that subcontractor. They're very, very busy, and they will not commit to us until they are sure that the slurry seal portion has been completed. So there's a little bit of cat and mouse with the scheduling, as far as that goes. We're very aware of the striping and the sizing of the spots, the parking spots downtown, and they will be standard spots. We've had some comments, oh, we're going to lose a spot. And the answer is, well, you're really not going to lose a spot because you didn't have one before. So now there will be, you know, there will be the same number of places to park, but you'll now be able to be within the lines. So we'll make sure that they're standard and, standard and/or compact, but, you know, handicapped appropriate, but they'll all be the appropriate size.
And also the handicap markings will be, I'm assuming will be part of the project.
Oh, absolutely. They'll be, they will be renewed, absolutely, yes.
Julie?
Yeah, I've been wondering. I know that we haven't resurfaced the city parking lot in between the museum and the Clayton Community Church building, but there are no markings left, and it's not very efficient parking at all anymore. And I'm wondering if it's possible that those get restriped as well.
I'd have to, I could work with the contractor and see what we can do with that.
Because you have to really search, and you can't find them. They're just gone. There's been enough work in there recently and various things, they've just worn away. They don't exist.
We'll look into it.
If I may add to that, because we did the car shows there, and there were tent spaces on each side. And sometimes it was a challenge to get everybody in and then to write them out, because 20 fills up that main part of the parking lot, and we always had that filled, filled, so.
Okay, good, that's good, John.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Scott. All right, thank you, Gary. So move up to the council for reports on their activities since our last city council meeting. Councilmember Catalano?
So just a couple things. So on Thursday, September 6th, we have the mayor's conference here in Clayton, and I want to thank city staffs particularly for being very well represented at that meeting. And I want to recognize those city staff members who worked very hard behind the scenes to actually put it together so that Clayton was able to host that. So that was a great event. And then I want to make two quick announcements. So one is the Oktoberfest. It's October 6th and 7th. We're definitely still looking for volunteers for that. It is one of the easiest ways in our town to volunteer. Takes three hours Saturday or Sunday to sign up for a shift. And as a lot of us know, CBCA, you know, raises probably close to a couple hundred thousand dollars of money in a year and donates it back to our community. So it is an easy way to do something for the community. So just need to go up to ClaytonCBCA.org website and sign up for a shift. And then I want to make one other recognition or quick announcement that involves the activity that happened in our town in the last day. You know, we had the sort of the social media post that involved our middle school. And I want to recognize our middle school principal banister, as well as our police department, for some of the action that they took very quickly. First, in terms of, as a parent who has a child in that middle school as well, we got, I guess, our police department found out about the incident sometime last night, and I think there was a message, a voice message that came from Principal Banister, probably 10 o'clock, 10:30 last night, to all the parents. There was another message that came to parents, probably 7:30, 8:00 a.m. this morning. And I think, a lot of kids stayed home actually today, but I think it was having that information from Principal Banister that allowed parents to make that decision for their child. So really appreciate, I think, on behalf of all the parents, to having that information. But then secondly, want to also really recognize our police department for all the investigation and action that they took in a time period that probably was 12 hours or so. You know, to be able to bring it to conclusion is pretty awesome and amazing. So really want to appreciate them for all the work that they did. And then lastly, obviously, we don't have any of the facts, and it's not up to us to have those facts, but whomever it was, whether it was a student or students or parents who, you know, saw something on social media that wasn't quite right, to have the courage to bring that information up to the police authorities' knowledge, that takes courage too. So definitely appreciate that there are people out there doing the right thing in that regard. So that's it.
Good. Vice Mayor Shuey.
Hey, I also attended the mayor's conference and echo Tuya's comments. Staff did an amazing job, Janet and everyone else. It was really fantastic, and everybody was very appreciative from the other cities. We always put on a great spread, and it was a great event, so thank you for that. And then today, I had a meeting at the charter, kind of an early meeting to go over things that can be done for the reappointment that is coming up with the county next year, just kind of talking about the successes that the charter's had, how we can highlight those and bring those to light to make sure that we have the full, you know, support of the county in going forward for another five years. So that was a couple hours. But it was quite interesting because there's been some turnover with teachers and obviously students every four years. And we had, we had students, we had teachers, we had, you know, administrators there. And just to hear the different stories, you know, asked, well, tell us what you like and tell us what you like, it's pretty impressive. And I think it's something we can all be proud of because, obviously, this council put itself on the line there, and the city did, to get that charter conversion. So looking forward to next year to getting that done for another five years, and I'll keep you updated. That's it.
Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah, at first, I didn't think we had too much going on this last couple of weeks, and then I looked at the calendar. Attended the Administration and Projects Committee for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. There's lots of activity because of Senate Bill 1 that passed a year ago, getting a lot of the projects that we've been working on for a very long time in gear and out to bid. The bids are coming in very, very well, very competitively. We have lots of bidders, which is a really good thing. And so we are going to be going forward and breaking ground very soon for the 684 interchange project, which adds the third lane on Highway 4 through the interchange, eliminating that horrible weave that we have right now going east and west. So that, we will be opening, doing the groundbreaking for that very soon. That's a project we've been working on for over 20 years. So this is just one of about seven phases, but it's a major safety improvement, so that's really good. The mayor's conference was fabulous. Thank you to staff who worked so hard on getting that done. Mayor Hayden was eloquent in his remarks, and we got lots of compliments. A lot of people, in fact, there was 100% attendance by all the cities, and that happens somewhat rarely. But every city attended, and that was really wonderful. And they commented how much they enjoyed coming to Clayton. We had our last concert of the season last Saturday. I want to thank all the small but loyal volunteers who worked all 10 concerts and worked to set them up every morning and break them down in the evening and hung out until it was all done. It is a very small crew that puts on those concerts, and so big thanks to all of them. I also had the honor of attending two ribbon cuttings on the Bay Trail in some of our fellow cities over in Hercules and Pinole. These two segments were ones that we've been working on for a great deal of time through the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments. And these two segments will bring us now to 350 miles of the 500 miles that rings the Bay for trail connections. And the one in Pinole actually is a very, very long bridge that goes over the Union Pacific tracks, where there are over 85 trains a day. And so it connects the trail from the top of a bluff down to the bayland, and it's absolutely gorgeous. So I would encourage anyone who wants a wonderful either bike ride or nice walk to go out there. It's just a glorious piece of trail. Also attended the TransPact meeting for Central County, transportation planning for the five Central County cities and the county. We worked together to put together projects that help our united cities. Attended four meetings of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And then yesterday, had the honor of attending a press conference with Senator Glazer and Assembly Member Baker to ask the governor to please veto AB 2923, which is the BART housing bill. And he hasn't signed it yet, and we're going to hope that he doesn't. So we're doing everything we can to make our voices heard. That is an encroachment into local control that while we don't have a BART station, the more the state takes over and gives our land use authority away to other agencies, the less we can control our own destiny. So we have to stand up and fight these bills. That's it.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Diaz.
I just had three things. We had our final car show last Wednesday night, another great season. Always have a lot of great participants and their vehicles. Also, was at the concert on last Saturday, staffing that and helping that out. And then yesterday, I too attended the press conference of Senator Glazer and Assembly Member Baker put on. And again, I'm not sure what the governor's doing on it, but another one of those examples where the state is trying to get power and run it out of Sacramento and not let the locals handle it.
That's it. Okay, thank you. I was busy as well. I actually attended some meetings prior to the last council meeting and was unable to attend the council meeting. I was out of the area on a family event. On August 27th, I did chair the Habitat Conservancy meeting that was held here in Clayton. We received an update on a legal issue that the conservancy is dealing with, and also approved a staff request to submit grant applications for two different conservation plans. It will generate considerable funding for the conservation of property in the area. On the 30th, also attended the August monthly CBCA, the Clayton Business and Community Association meeting that we hold monthly up at Oakhurst. Invite anyone interested in finding out more about that organization to attend our meetings that are held every Thursday, last Thursday of every month. They're open to the public. And we have representatives from all the different clubs in town, and certainly the city council, planning commission, and police department give updates on things that have occurred since the last CBCA meeting. So it's a great way for people to find out what's going on in Clayton, also find out events that are occurring with other clubs, as well as certainly the major events put on by CBCA to raise money that is all poured back into our Clayton community. So that's a good effort. Tuya mentioned the upcoming Oktoberfest, so we had more information on that. That's always a big challenge for us to get enough people to help us put that event on. And I know a lot of people in Clayton have commented that they really like those events and want to encourage you to help us keep putting those events on by volunteering. We do have a website, the CBCA website, where you can volunteer. And just a quick three-hour shift helps spread that labor force around and minimize the impact on individuals that have been involved in this for quite some time. So thank you. And then on September 6th, as was mentioned, we did host the mayor's conference. And that's a conference that's put on every month by different cities. It rotates around, every city in Contra Costa County eventually puts this on, hosted by the mayor of that city. And it is held in a nice location, and it is attended by representatives from all the cities, and many of the elected officials also either attend or send representatives. And it's another opportunity for people to find out what's going on in their neighborhood and the Contra Costa County in general. And at that particular meeting, we did have a presentation on the growing housing crisis, both in California and particularly in the Bay Area. I did give, I had a chance at the end of the presentation period to really give a nice promotion for Clayton and was able to give a short history of Clayton, thanking the staff very much. Janet and her staff put on a great event up there. It's always well-received. We hold it up at the Oakhurst Country Club, and people enjoy that location, and it was another beautiful sunset up there that people could enjoy. And also took the opportunity to also talk about our wonderful trail system. We're very proud of that. We're often recognized as one of the top trail systems in the entire country, so I like to always talk about that. Then on September 8th, I attended the Moonlight on the Mountain event that was hosted by Save Mount Diablo, attended as a chair of the Habitat Conservancy and the mayor of Clayton, and also a member of that organization. It's the major fundraiser for that organization that preserves property that rejoins the state park. And the idea is there to preserve that for future generations' enjoyment. And then on September 12th, I attended the County Connection Finance and Administration Subcommittee. The County Connection has a number of different subcommittees that meet separately and then report to the overall governing body. And that's one of them that looks at the finances required to run that very effective County Connection system. And at that meeting, we talked about upgrading routers in the buses, and also a new five-year IT update was provided, and we approved both of those. And then on September 15th, this last Saturday, also attended the Last Concert in the Grove. And want to recognize- And want to recognize this is also a community organized event, helped, considered by the city, but also many major sponsors and they're recognized with banners at the event. I encourage you to use those businesses when you can. We always like to encourage the use of local businesses and they turn around and help support local events. So Howard Geller came up with that idea many years ago and continues to be the main coordinator scheduling those bands and it's always a nice variety of bands. So when that schedule comes out for next year, all of us try and protect those times on our calendars. It's every other Saturday in the summer once they start. Also want to recognize Councilmember Diaz, he's one of the workers that is down there Saturday morning setting things up and then helping tear it down after the events. And he does that for all of our events at the park with the concert series. And then Julie also helps both with the setup and teardown as well as the donations that help fund that organization and, excuse me, the event itself. And that's put on by donations again from local businesses. And then the people attending the event donate to it as well to keep that event going. So we don't have to fund it officially through the city. So you heard about the upcoming Oktoberfest? That'll be the first weekend in October and another busy weekend. So that keeps all of us very busy. So talking about keeping the council busy, we've got city council election coming up and we have candidates to serve on the city council. And we always give them an opportunity to address the council and the community at these meetings prior to the election. So I do see all of the candidates here this evening. So I'd like to offer Brian Bedell if you want to come up and address the council and community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will confess that I'm a little under the weather, suffering from a head cold, but I'm going to power through regardless. As a candidate, first of all, my name is Brian Bedell. I think most of you know me by now. As a candidate for this, for city council, I will promise to bring honesty and integrity, something that is sorely needed by this city council. I'll be addressing a little bit about that more later. I will also bring communication, something that else, something else that is sorely missed. For months, if not over a year, there have been pleas from this community to be able to communicate with this council in a more effective manner. Those communications, those requests have gone completely ignored. All opportunity to speak to this council has been given through three-minute little blurbs at the, at these council meetings during which we have council members rolling their eyes, smirking or otherwise not paying attention and otherwise dismissing them. That's not okay. And as a city council member, that will never happen under my watch. If I have to do it by myself, I will ensure that I reach out to the community. They're not going to have to come find me. I'm going to find them through town hall meetings, through email newsletters, which by the way, I see the city has finally taken my suggestion and put that up on their website, and other ways to reach out to the community to find out what they want and what they need. That goes into another aspect of, that I'll provide as a city council member and that's representation. As a representative, an elected representative, I'm not somebody who is elected to substitute my decisions and wisdom for that of the people. I will listen to the people. I will vote their voice. I will vote their will, not mine. If a majority of the people tell me to vote one way, that's how I'm going to vote, regardless of how I feel or whether I think it's the better way to go. I may give suggestions as to why I think there's a better way, but I will never turn a deaf ear to my constituents as the city council has done on repeated occasions. I will also provide two-way communication along those same lines. In this election, there's been a lot said about what is your vision and what is your view of Clayton? Well, my answer to that question is my vision for Clayton is to look around. I think it's a pretty darn good place just the way it is, without three-story buildings, without parolee housing threatening the safety of our children and residents, and without the threat of developments every few months that are going to encroach on all the festivals that we enjoy so much. As a city council member, I will ensure that those things stay. I'm not doing this to change Clayton. I'm doing this to keep Clayton the way it is. That's why I moved here. That's why I lived here and that's what I'm going to do. And that is a pledge I make to everyone, every citizen in this council, in this city. I will always have the interest of Clayton at the forefront, the safety, and I will never turn my back on any part of Clayton, whether it's Keller Ridge or Shell Lane. Everybody will get my attention and will get my representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carl CW Wolf, another candidate.
Buddy, I'm Carl CW Wolf and I am running for the esteemed Clayton City Council. I'm a recently retired creative director and marketing person for a major corporation. And I, I'm running as a planning commissioner and that's because I've served a couple of terms now in the planning commission. While I don't have a civics background, never have, I've been in show business and been in creative work my whole life. Started as a kid actor, went on to comedy, did a lot of writing, creative writing, and then found myself in the creative world. I'm running as a planning commissioner though because I'm proud of the, I'm proud of the work that I've done on the planning commission. I've served a couple of terms there, including one year as the chair. I too, like my opponent, vote with the people the majority of the time. I'm very much into, and if you look at my record, which is a matter of public record, you'll see that I vote with the people. You know, the majority of the time in the planning commission, we have little things that come up. Somebody's deck has to be built or somebody wants to put a room in the garage. And if the neighbors come out and they're saying that it's fine or if nobody shows up, then usually that's, that's the way that I vote. I'm not afraid though to vote my conscience. I'm afraid to take a leadership position whenever that's necessary because I feel that a small group of vocal individuals may not just be enough to make a decision. And we're being certainly more put upon over and over again now by the state putting more restrictions on the things we can and cannot do, different types of housing and different land use. They're taking our rights away and we're kind of mandated to do a lot of the things that maybe we don't want to do, but we have to take those leadership positions and that's what I intend to do. I think that there has to be a vision for Clayton that includes every section of the voter, the voting population. And at this point, I think we're at some kind of divergence. We don't really have that vision right now. I would like to have citizens from all sides be able to speak their mind on what they feel the vision for Clayton should be. And for me, it's always been trying to preserve the way of life that we have here, but knowing that there is going to be a future coming, there's going to be future development coming. And what is that responsible growth going to be? I believe that we can and will have responsible growth in Clayton, much like we've done over the 30 years that I've lived here with the gas station, with the Grove, with the Clayton Station. These are all things that were contentious issues at one time, but that the citizens have come together and created one voice to create a vision. So I know my time is up and there's a lot more to say and I will say that I'm very proud of the record that I have. Win or lose, I intend to serve Clayton because Clayton is going to be my life's work and I'm just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Wang. Jeff?
It's actually pronounced Wan. My name is Jeff Wang. I'm an active CPA in private industry, the treasurer of my small HOA, and I've been a Clayton resident for over nine years. My family moved to Clayton to raise our kids. We came for the great schools, safe neighborhoods and the small-town feel and charm. You may think that's what Clayton already is, so why do you want to change things? But that's the thing, similar to the other candidates, I don't really want to change things. I want to preserve all the wonderful qualities that Clayton has that brought me and so many other families here. But over the last few years, those things have been at risk. When things are going well, I think most people are content to let them continue, as am I. It's when things aren't going well that folks like me need to step up and speak out. When you fail in your duty to protect the safety of all Clayton residents, people like me will speak out. You may hope that because you increased the buffer distance for parolee housing at the last meeting, people will forget how badly the council mishandled that issue. But I think you know that they actually won't forget. And maybe that's why code enforcement is now threatening people who have Mike's yard sign out, who have Brian's yard sign out, that they are in violation of the Clayton Municipal Code. See, in May of last year, you passed a new restriction on yard signs, including political yard signs. By limiting political speech, perhaps you hope that folks will forget, that they won't know that there's an alternative to the establishment candidates. That prohibition on political speech however presents an interesting contrast to how you handled parolee housing. Both scenarios were driven by external factors. Parolee housing by AB 109, political speech, political speech banning by a SCOTUS ruling in Reed. But while you delayed in acting on parolee housing for two years, you acted very quickly to ban political speech. Both scenarios presented some risk of litigation. Parolee housing is a matter of first impression with an unknown outcome and political speech banning based on a long history of jurisprudence where the ordinance you passed violates the First Amendment. While you demurred to one end of the risk-averse spectrum regarding parolee housing, you were more than willing to incur risk to ban political speech. And when the city attorney cautioned against increasing buffer zones for parolee housing, you heeded the warning. But when the city attorney cautioned against banning political speech, you went ahead and did it anyways. So when the people like me do step up and speak out, you have more tools at your disposal to quash their efforts. Maybe you'll be successful, but I'm hoping that you won't be and that's why I'm a candidate for city council. Thank you.
Jeff, sorry if I mispronounced your name. I'll certainly do better next time. And lastly, we have current councilman, actually Vice Mayor Shuey.
Thank you. I have been faithfully and really with pleasure serving for 16 years on the council and for four years before that on the Clayton Community Services Commission. I am a large part of why Clayton is where the other candidates wanted to move. We are a safe community. We are a community that looks after its citizens. We balance our budget every year throughout recessions where other cities go bankrupt. We are fiscally responsible and that is a large part due to our city manager and our city council taking care of business. I have listened over the years to all the citizens that come to me. I have made decisions that are popular and decisions that are unpopular, but have been done for the best of the city. You cannot be ruled by a vocal minority. I will not and will never do a vocal minority if the right thing to do is something different. So if you like the downtown park, I was the chair of the Downtown Park Design Committee. We incorporated all of those wonderful features that you and your children enjoy, including the concerts in the park. We planned for that. The North Valley Park, that was put in at my insistence along with a bunch of other neighbors and we lobbied the city council. Bachi in downtown, the city council has played a large role in bringing Bachi to downtown. I've been a part of that. Labor Day Derby, the Charter School, which all of your kids have the opportunity to go to. It is a success and through any of the various measures, you can see online that the Charter School pre-conversion and post-conversion, we are better off and our children are better off. And I was a part of that. I was on the original steering committee for that conversion charter. Over the years, I've been involved in many numerous decisions and plannings to try and figure out what to do downtown, to determine whether we leave it vacant, which it has been for quite a while, or whether we explore other options because you never know what you're going to get until you explore and look and then you make a decision. And that's what we will continue to do. And finally, we have kept labor peace with our Police Officers Association, our miscellaneous employees. I've been part of the negotiations for that. We have always been fair to our employees, but we have kept our, you know, budget within means and I would like to continue to do that. I think I have listened and I have done what is right for this city and I would hope that you will vote for me again in November. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think it was refreshing for the citizens, both here and at home and watching this later, to hear each of the candidates talk about what they consider to be the issues and why they're running. So hopefully that is something you can factor in to your decisions for Election Day. Next item is public comment and this is on non-agenda items. These are on items that are not on the agenda and therefore action cannot be taken on these items, but we give the public an opportunity to address the council for those issues that they like to address the council on. So I do have speaker cards for some people that would like to address the council. First up is Don, should be John Crancy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of city staff. My name is John Crancy and my partner, Marcy Longchamp, and I live on Coyote Circle. I'm reading a statement from her tonight as she's at home recovering from surgery and she wanted her voice to be heard and to be on record. It appears that things have settled down in the city of Clayton. It's back to business as usual and the biggest news on next door is the coming of Panera and the usual missing dogs and cats. However, we on Coyote Circle are not all feeling this supposed peace and quiet. Her concern today is regarding our park, which is directly across the street from my home or our home. Although our focus is on the park situation, please make no mistake, I am equally as troubled and shocked by the fact that your ordinance regarding parolee housing is also affecting the children and elderly on Shell Ridge. It is beyond our comprehension. By your actions, you are putting children at risk. You have targeted these areas because you had to find somewhere far from downtown to house parolees. Are you afraid of litigation? I don't believe it was the state at all who made such a definition of parks being public, private or pocket. It was you, the city, who chose to make such a delineation to avoid a lawsuit. Shame on you. You have singled us out. You have thrown us under the bus. We are deed the sacrificial lambs of Clayton. By your actions, you have said in no uncertain terms that the safety of our children do not matter. How on earth can you justify this to yourselves? Coyote Circle has a park. We should be protected in exactly the same way as other parks are being protected in Clayton. What you have done by passing this ordinance is unconscionable. I do not know how you can sleep at night. Thank you for your time.
Clayton should not be for sale. It's a straightforward concept really. But if you look around downtown, that's the impression you'd get, that the last-baited buildings on Oak Street have a for-sale sign. The large lot where our events or festivals are held have a large for-sale sign. Why is the city so intent on selling its assets? With our current reserve position of approximately one year of operating activity, we do not need the one-time influx of cash. The city needs to utilize its resources in a responsible way to shape the future of our downtown. Once these properties are sold, the city loses its ability to exercise discretion about how the property is used and what type of building or structure may go in there. If these properties sell, the city would be constrained to approve many things that the residents may not appreciate. But since they'd be consistent with the existing general and town center specific plan, they would be allowed. This is why the three-story, three-subber building senior rental project right near downtown is on the table. Because of previous actions of the council to rezone these three parcels from single-family residential to high-density multifamily, the council can comfortably say that the proposal for these three buildings is consistent with the general and town-specific plan. Of course it is because that was rezoned to allow it. And as members of the council have repeatedly told the community, private property owners have a right to develop their own property. And because those properties are privately held and they were rezoned to be high-density multifamily, the property owner gets to put giant three-story buildings downtown where there are no other three-story buildings. The property owner gets to take advantage of the California density law, yielding variances for things like height restrictions, setback requirements and parking, all because the council was complicit in rezoning these properties and they were privately owned. If instead the city retained ownership of these properties, the city could take action to ensure the types of businesses and development that occurs is consistent with the downtown character and charm that attracted so many of us to Clayton. We could offer a variety of creative incentives like longer-term significantly reduced lease amounts, tax abaments, or other actions that encourage certain businesses. amounts, tax abamens, or other actions that encourage certain businesses to participate, while retaining some measure of control. We could even incentivize businesses that are already here, assisting them in updating their properties for doing repairs that may have fallen by the wayside. Instead, the council seeks intent on installing a senior care facility in downtown open lot, as you've entered into multiple negotiation agreements with various developers to do so. And that's wrong for Clayton. When I look to the future Clayton, what our downtown could be, I see so much potential. We could have a vibrant downtown full of small retail and locally-owned business that benefits all the residents of Clayton. But that future is only possible if the council shares that vision and doesn't sell our city to outside developers. The three-story, three-separate building senior rental project right near downtown, it is an example of what happens when the council doesn't share that vision. Clayton should not be for sale. That's why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Next up would be Brian Bedell.
I'm going to use this opportunity to speak on two subjects, the first of which will be very brief, and it's a follow-up to Mr. Crancy's and Ms. Longchamp's comments regarding the city councils turning their back on our friends and neighbors in Keller Ridge and Shell Lane. You guys blew it. There's no question about that. But you can still fix it. As Councilman Diaz requested, this can still be looked at and changed, and I urge this council to do that. It's not the best scenario, but it's all you've got, so do it. Do it right. Do the right thing. The second thing I want to talk about is something that is very, very troubling, and that's the issue of government censorship. There is a systematic process going on right now to quash Mr. Wan and my candidacy. It is through direct actions of the city and through subordinates of the city. It's followed a fairly straightforward chronology. It first took the form of trying to ban people on Nextdoor and taking threads down, which included taking Mr. Wan's thread down. And please don't look surprised, Mr. Mayor, because your wife was instrumental in doing it. Your wife used, or shall I say abused, her position as a lead on Nextdoor to systematically report and try to get threads and posts taken down by me. In fact, my entire thread was, she tried to get taken down, and we have documentary evidence of it. So don't deny it. Don't look surprised. With that in mind, I have contacted the political fair practice commission, the county election board, and the Contra Costa District Attorney to open an investigation into election tampering. The second little episode came at last meeting when my three minutes, and only my three minutes during the live feed, was taken down. Not surprisingly, Councilman Shuey was presiding over that. Let's call that a coincidence, really? The last thing has to do with the sign ordinance that Mr. Wan referenced. I've received multiple reports from supporters of mine that they've received notices of violation, that their signs don't comply with the thing, and have been threatened by the city that if they don't take their signs down, they're going to have $500 per day fines levied on them. Not okay. You are trying to quash two candidates and squash their voice. That is a bully pulpit. Let me tell you one thing. The ordinance that you are relying on is unconstitutional, and you know it. Mr. Shuey admitted as much, and Ms. Subermanian admitted as much. So let me give you a little tip. I live at 1118 Peacock Creek Drive. I've got three signs up. I'm in violation of that ordinance. I dare you to cite me. I dare you to hit me with a notice of violation, because if you do, I will take it to court. I will have an injunction slapped on that ordinance faster than your head will spin. Go ahead. Try me.
Okay, and lastly, Jay Gamble.
With the candidates that are running for office here, obviously, they haven't held city council office or political office, as far as I know. But Ms. Pierce has been on city council for 26-plus years, and Mr. Shuey for 16, and if he shows up for another term, it'll be 20 years on the city council. I understand all the great things that have happened during that time. We've had the park. We've had, you know, multiple parks, it sounds like. We have festivals that have come. But that's why it's kind of perplexing that you'd want to let an exclusive deal come in here, like the fulcrum thing, and let them propose a three-story assisted care unit right in front of our, you know, major showpiece area where all our festivals are held: the barbecue cook-off, all the car shows, the Art &amp; Wine Festival, where they've got the band play there and people sitting on the hay bales. Where's that all going to go? Into parking spots, up and down Center Street, out in the sun? Doesn't sound like fun to me. So I'm thinking term limits is a good idea for the city council. As far as volunteerism, I can't match Officer Eddie. I don't think any of us can, except for maybe Ms. Pierce. But with all the things that I hear about Mr. Shuey being able to do volunteer-wise, it's never noticed that we are all volunteering. We're volunteering hundreds of hours into investigating what you guys are doing and what our city council is doing, and keeping up on politics in this town. I have your wife's complaint right here, screenshot from one of the leads. We have access to this stuff. So when you... "Nextdoor is not the place for campaigning!" "These posts are not factual!" "This man is verbally abusing people on Nextdoor." Really? Brian? No. He's abusing you guys because you guys are guilty. "This man is verbally abusing people on Nextdoor. Political ranting is not what Nextdoor is all about. Voted, remove." Cindy Hayden. So I just want people to know, there's a lot of crap going on here that they don't know about, and I don't know how to shout it any louder than to hold a sign up downtown. Because this is shenanigans that, I'm telling you, if there were more people here, you guys would probably be booed out of the room. You know, that's my volunteerism, okay? I don't go around tooting my horn and telling everybody how many festivals I go to and everything else. I try to protect those festivals. I try to do my civic duty by watching over what everybody else is doing here that supposedly is supposed to be a public servant. And I know, I find, I see that, you know, Julie finds it quite amusing, because she's gotten somebody off Nextdoor, but believe me, I'm going to be so much more effective now. Thank you.
All right. That's all the speaker cards we have then for public comment. And seeing no one else requesting that, I would like to give the council an opportunity... excuse me, we'll close off then, public comment, and bring it up to council if council would like to comment on what's been said during the public comment period.
I do want to...
Julia?
Yeah, I would like to say a couple of things. I mean, I don't want to add anything, I want to address the parolee housing just slightly. I don't want to add anything new to the record. We've already made a decision on that. But I do want to just state a couple of facts of it, since there were a couple of speakers who came up on it, and I really want to be clear. There was a comment about us having turned our backs on the citizens and doing the right thing, and what I want to make be clear, and what we said at the hearing, and at least I said at the hearing, is the position that's been advocating us doing the right thing is the one that will expose our city even more and create even less regulation. And we went through this. What's being proposed by some people is to create a, to eliminate all areas that would be available for parolee housing, and that's effectively creating a ban. And I know Mr. Bedell knows this too, that that is exposing the city to litigation liability, that, you know, there are costs involved in litigation, but that's not the concern. You know, we, a number of us spoke at all of the hearings that, you know, if you lose in a lawsuit, you not only lose the money, but you also lose the ability to regulate that matter, as your regulation is going to get struck down. So you have nothing, and you've exposed the entire city to allow it without any permission. If you win in a lawsuit, you're still going to lose, because the state still has to deal with parolee housing issue, and they are going to not sit idle and let every city ban parolee housing. So in that case, they're going to take the ability from the city to regulate that. So like I said, I'm not adding anything new to the record, but I do want to be clear that, you know, people don't have to agree with what we did, but there were reasons why, at least I voted the way I did, which was to vote for a legally defensible regulation, not to expose the city to litigation, not to put us in a, you know, lose-lose situation. That is not, in my opinion, doing the right thing. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Julie?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I can't let it stand. I have not been on Nextdoor more than five times in the entire time I've been a member there. I do read it. I have not acted upon anybody's post. The only times I have posted have been to recommend an appliance repair person, to answer questions about the rules for the concert in the park, and I tried to post the PowerPoint for the parolee housing hearing that we had in July. I was unsuccessful in getting that done. But those are the only things I have ever posted about, nor do I intend to post. I have not talked to Nextdoor management. I've had nothing to do with it. That's not a forum that I intend to engage in, just for the record. So if somebody thinks I've posted, somebody else has done it in my name, because it's not been me.
Gary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, it was raised, and he raised it tonight, Mr. Bedell did as well, regarding the livestream and the incident that occurred. And I was troubled by that, because none of us controlled those controls up here and other things. And so I asked our IT consultant to investigate what might have occurred, and let me give a little background on it. The city's decision to livestream city council meetings occurred a while ago, but the city has always relied upon the county's Wi-Fi system in our library to do that, those connections and that available bandwidth. What's happened recently, and I think the council first noticed it, particularly those of you who went to electronic agendas and whatnot...
No service.
Yeah, there was no, are you still on no service right now?
Yeah. I have no signal.
Yeah. And so we've been working with the IT consultant, because what's happened recently, as more citizens have been active and attended the meetings, I think most people now go to the Wi-Fi spot that's available. And by doing that, that has bumped and caused hiccups in the livestreaming. I just want people to know, however, I went on today onto the city's website, the livestream taping of that meeting actually did include Mr. Bedell's comments during that time period. And so what we've been doing is working with our IT consultant to actually create a Wi-Fi hotspot here that's dedicated just for the city. It'll move it from analog to digital, and we've been working on that. It was supposed to be active for tonight, but you're just telling me it's not up. So we'll continue to work through that problem. But my apologies to Mr. Bedell for that occurring. No one here in this room controlled that at that particular time, and I don't know how it happened, but we're trying to fix that and work with our IT consultant to do so. That's it.
All right. Well, I want to address a couple of things. First, the charge of censorship and the charge that personally my wife and through my wife myself have engaged in censoring comments that were on Nextdoor. Was alleged that we took that stream down because we objected to the information. And my wife is an administrator of our local neighborhood Nextdoor website, and when she applied for that, she did read over the policy and the intent of Nextdoor being to share information of interest to our neighbors. And it explicitly stated that it is not to be used for political purposes that go beyond common expectations for political use. And she was questioning some of the comments that were appearing related to the Clayton campaign, and encouraged the administrators of Nextdoor to take a look at that language and see if it still complied with the policy and intent of Nextdoor. And that was the intent of her message, pointing out why she wanted that looked at, because it appeared to be contrary to the policy of Nextdoor. There's other ways that those same comments can be shared on the internet using other forums. So she just was questioning this particular forum. Second issue was, again, the charge that the council is ignoring two particular areas in town, and that we had initiated this policy of encouraging parolee housing in Clayton. And I think through the hearings, we tried to convey that we were doing just the opposite based on the best political, excuse me, the best legal advice that we could obtain, and that legal advice was obtained in conjunction with other consulting attorneys, both within the large law firm that our city attorney belongs to, as well as other contacts throughout the state of California, as all communities are dealing with this issue that has been initiated by the state of California by releasing parolees earlier than they used to be out into the communities, and then leaving it up to the communities to try to control those parolees and where they're housed. So we did research, and we took quite some time. That's why there was a delay in taking action, to see if other cities were able to come up with a solution to that problem that could withstand legal challenge and the expenses involved, when we did not see anyone coming up, because they were getting the same legal advice that we were receiving, and that's that you really were, we were being advised not to adopt an outright ban against that housing, because it would be challenged and we should not expect to prevail. And if for some reason we did, were able to defend that, the state would probably change their policy, because they're intent, and there's a legal obligation for them to meet a state Supreme Court requirement that they correct the overcrowding in our state prisons. That's what has caused this problem. We researched all of the options available to us and came up with what we thought provided the best long-term protection for our residents here in Clayton that could be sustained on a long-term basis. And again, we still feel that the market forces is the number-one deterrent for our residents even to be exposed to even consideration for placing parolees in our wonderful community because of the higher property values here. And when anyone looking at placing parolees in housing, they would look at the entire area, and I suspect they would be, the other areas would be much more attractive, both for the market value of the real estate and access to transportation and to social services. So we feel that is the number-one deterrent. Second, we did want to build in regulations that would result in public hearings being held and allowing our residents here in Clayton to participate in that public process. So we always have the ability to amend ordinances. That legal authority is always available to us, and we will certainly be monitoring what other cities are doing, and if it looks like better alternatives are implemented by other cities that look attractive, we'll look at ourselves, because our first and foremost responsibility is to provide the best protection for our Clayton citizens. So that's what's been driving this from day one. So I want to end then the council comment on this. There are no public hearings today, no action items, so ask if the council has any items they'd like to be considered for future council meetings. Seeing that at this time, we have no closed session, so we will adjourn tonight's meeting to our next regularly scheduled city council meeting on October 2nd. Thank you.